At this time, we will call our meeting to order. We ask that we stand for our invocation as well as our pledge of allegiance. And at this time, we will start off with a moment of silence to recognize the devastations that we have experienced within our nation for the last two weeks when it came to natural disasters. But also a moment for those who are presently actively at war. So before we enter invocation, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. To our great Creator, we come before you today as humble as we know how. We thank you for always being with us. We thank you for walking with us. We thank you for your love, your grace, your mercy, and for your protection. For we know that you hold this world and you hold us in your hands. We ask that you come within the midst of this meeting, that your will shall be done. For there is no greater will than yours. For you have all understanding, and we only know in part. But we trust you that whatever there is to be, that your grace, your mercy, your protection, is always with those who love and serve you. So we submit ourselves to you, and I personally thank you for all that you do, each and every moment of all of our lives. We ask that you be with those who are grieving, be with those who are homeless at this time, be with those who do not even know where they will lay their heads tonight. We trust you. We thank you, and we honor you. And you are welcome into this meeting, and you are welcome into this temple to have your way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will proceed with our agenda as outlined. First, we have approval of a minutes from September the ninth, 2024. Regular meeting, we have a motion. We have a motion, it's second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those favors, favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Interposed, lack sign. Let it reflect that the minutes have passed. Next, we'll move on to honors and recognition. At this time, we will ask for the department head to come forward to call out our recipient.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Wilson D. celebrating 20 years in the Recreation Department. Coach D., if we come to the home and the Recreation Department, we're just about to finish this by cover four, two thousand and four. And this gentleman just has to help kids. Everything that he does is about taking care of facilities, and everything is about kids. Loves what he does. He dumps this over at Orange Street. He has done, he's done Northwest Community Center, serving the kids. He is a park groundkeeper. He is makers for us at this point in time, on a shirt overseeing all our community centers. Everybody's fortunate to have a Coach D. working for him, which is very thankful for how, look forward to having another 20 years.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, Madam Mayor, we have one more recognition. This recognition wasn't on our program. It reads as follows. Mayor Teresa Myers Irving is a lifelong resident of Florence, South Carolina. She is the daughter of the late Charlie and Isabella Myers. She attended West Florence, excuse me, she attended School District Ones and is a proud graduate of West Florence High School. After graduating high school, Mayor Myers Irving decided to pursue a career in nursing. She earned an associate degree in nursing from Florence Darlin Technical College and then continued her education at Francis Marion University, where she graduated in 1990 with a Bachelor of Science in Nursing. In addition to being a registered nurse, Mayor Myers Irving holds a specialty certification in the Neonatal Resuscitation Program and has also served as an instructor. After 43 years as a nursing professional, Mayor Irving retired from a cloud health on August 31st, 2024. Prior to the start of her political career, Mayor Irving was well-known community activist. Her passion for serving and community outreach led her to run for city council. In November 2010, she was elected to Florence City Council representing District One, where she served as a councilwoman from November 16th, 2010 to November 11th, 2020. On November 3rd, 2020, Mayor Myers Irving made history by becoming the first female and first African-American elected mayor to Florence, South Carolina. As mayor, Meyer Ervins led the city of Florence through challenging times such as COVID-19 pandemic, such as the COVID-19 pandemic. In 2020, she introduced the Mayor's Coalition for Humanity. Through this coalition, various initiatives were established to include the Mayor's Youth Initiative, Cultural Arts Committee, Mayor Citizens Roundtable, and more. She was instrumental in providing resources for the youth in the community, thus becoming one of the founding members of the PD Youth Day Initiative, which is held annually on the second Saturday in July. Mayor Myers Irving's passion to serve and bring the Florence community together is evident through her affiliation with various boards and organizations, including the Hope Health Board of Directors, the Association of the South Carolina Mayors, the Florence Center Board, Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, Florence Downtown Development Corporation, a voting member of the Florence Area Transportation Study Committee, Raleigh Mayor's Design Fellow, a fellow in education for the School Foundation, and spring 2024 graduate of the Diversity Leaders Initiative 16th Midlands Class. Mayor Myers Irving has received numerous awards and recognitions for his service, to include the Impact in Florence Award by the Navy Recruitment Station of Florence, an honorary Doctorate of Humanities degree for his dedication and service to the Florence community from Francis Marion University, 2023 Outstanding Alumni Award from her beloved alma mater, Francis Marion University, an honorary Doctorate of Humanities degree from the Agape Institute of Theology, and many other honors and recognitions. Mayor Irving is married to a husband of 40 years, Mr. Levon Irving. And she states in here that he's been a great husband except for his love of the Dallas Cowboys. It's written right there, man. I had to read it. They have three children, Mr. Levon C. Irving the Second, Dr. Charlie I. Irving the Second, and Ms. Casey Irving McElveen. The Ervins recently gained the title as grandparents with the birth of their first grandchild, Ms. Isabella. Mayor Myers Irving's tenure as mayor of the city of Florence, South Carolina reflects her commitment and dedication to ensure all citizens of Florence are provided with the highest quality of life. Her legacy is truly inspirational to future leaders and will leave a lasting impression of progress, resilience, and unity in the community. Please welcome, please celebrate, we are now celebrating 14 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Florence. Join me and congratulate Mayor.
I thought some reading like just about so. The reference says, "For the..." That is, "is here." Thank you so greatly to go to the dead. So for me, what I see, I think, as a real, that guy's people, a dry type here, because this is my calling to life. It's a problem to consider certain on this earth to make a better of what he tells his people. I think we've got enough, and I think that he weren't alive. He go through something, the enemy, but he sees the boy going to kill, steal, and destroy. But I know the word of God said, "No weapon, no arms, yes, shall... That's right. The word, yeah. But even all that I do, is because I pardon those unscrupulous here. That's right. So I continue to serve my traitor on this earth, just constantly killing life, death, and strength. I will answer this call, that what I do, are to always honor God. The mankind was not only in the state, the mankind to be still in the church, telling That's right, and the doctors, especially a wife. And I trust that, and senior part, that I will not be serving yet a Sunday often. But before I became city councilor, before I became lead, I am, and I still Teresa Myers Irving, I can't think of something started, I can't think of anything else yet. So I will only serve with dollars, I don't need a child. As long as I can child up, it's safe, and it's serving their promise, I will always do what I serve. That's why I was like, thank you, Scotty, for this, I wasn't taken, because what I really post them, I ever before, I know the status of utility, she recently been with Barca Community, and here running, so she get back, and great, so that I say, thank and I feel like the one I hear mercy, called to my love, and see that they're high, she get what I'm like, they're really good. So for me, I retire, because of the nobodies of that. It's why I, it's a story, the name here, the bills, oh, it's almost fixed. But especially to everyone here, thank you so much for your support. We never know what's supporting you, and I points to laws and the lives that I give them death and strength, like with him and shielded out, how all the prayers we hear. Thanks so much.
Okay, I'll say Scotty got that one over on me. So at this time, we are going to prepare to proceed with our agenda as outlined. Next, we have our appearances before council. Now, we had Ms. Ashanti Pickens. I don't think I see Ashanti here. And we gave everyone a few minutes to exit, who needs to exit there. So at this time, we, I don't see Ms. Ashanti Pickens own in the audience. Ms. Ashanti Pickens was, is the 24, 2024 National American Miss South Carolina preteen, and we had honor of meeting with her in one of our community meetings. I hope that she will be able to attend in the future. The great thing about this young lady, one of her platform is running for an answer for sickle cell. She's a sickle cell patient. She will be one of the first one and the youngest one in the state of South Carolina who would be receiving the treatment to cure sickle cell. Her brother is actually a recipient, and he was treated and cured of sickle cell. So I would like to congratulate Ms. Ashanti Pickens on all that she's done. But as a young woman, so young, preteen, she's still doing so much. And so I want to say congratulations to her and best on her coming time when she have her treatment. And next, we have Dr. Joe Anillo to discuss traffic issues in the city of Florence. And if I did not pronounce that correctly, please correct me when you get up there.
Annie Yellow.
Annie Yellow, that's beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, I'm Dr. Joe Annie Yellow, just retired after 21 years from Francis Marion. Obviously, what, with the people leaving, it's not about Francis Marion, I guess it's about the mayor. And so I don't have the same audience, she commands, but I just retired, and it's been a great, a great run. From Connecticut originally, moved to Nashville, here, here in Florence, met my wife from Columbia, have our family here. This is our home. Unfortunately, due to some family and personal issues, we're going to be relocating in June. We're moving to New Hampshire. Her family's from Boston, mine's from Hartford, so we're kind of taking our kids back home. I heard that things last longer when they're frozen than when they're baked. So we're hoping we will preserve ourselves a little better up there. But as a capstone to my career, I wrote a book, and I'm really not here to promote the book, but the essence of the book is distinguishing between leadership and management. An example might be you hire a manager to round up a herd of horses that have broken out of the corral. You hire a leader to make sure they never get out of the corral. And anecdotally, as I've driven around the town for the last 21 years, I've noticed some couple things that are a bit of a concern, and it's kind of a gift to Florence for you guys being so good to me. I wanted to give a gift of an idea, because I guess that's, that's my business. We produce ideas. And it's anecdotal, but it's something that's of a concern to me. Actually, there's one major traffic idea and one minor one. The major one is my big concern that the situation with golf carts is a disaster waiting to happen. I see children riding golf carts on streets like Marsh and Damon at high speeds without seat belts, with infants being held in the front, with kids sitting dangling off the back, with dogs jumping in and out of the cart. And I don't know much about the rules and regulations and the traffic regarding taxes and how golf carts are sanctioned. But I am just really fearful that at some point, there's going to be a major accident concerning golf carts. 14-year-old kids should not be driving golf carts on Damon Road and Marsh Road without seat belts, without lights, without signals. They're jumping around, standing up. And so this is a concern of mine that, I have three children, and I drive in the neighborhoods where these kids are, and I'm just saying, my awareness is such that I would like to at least officially and formally mention it. You know, I haven't been here talking about a lot of things, mentioning a lot of things, but I do think leadership is, is one of those things where we head off problems before they happen, you know, not after they happen. And so that's one of the concerns I have. A minor concern I have too is, in the last 20 years, I've noticed that people run red lights the ways they used to run yellow lights. And once again, I just see a really intersection disaster happening at some point, and I'm just going to say, I think what would be good, since you're not going to stop people from running red lights, it might be good if we could time the green lights to pause a little bit longer than they currently are, so that people don't go into an intersection when the light turns green, thereby maybe causing an intersection crash with someone who's running a red light. So again, I've noticed the increase in traffic in my 21 years. A lot of it has to do with the growth and the economic success of Florence. You know, I've seen great changes in Florence, I've seen a lot of good things here. We're sad to leave, but I'm hoping that that could be in some small way my gift to Florence to raise that awareness of some things, especially the golf cart things. You know, we're not talking about golf carts in gated communities. We're talking about golf carts going 35 miles an hour on a street where there are much bigger vehicles. So anyways, that's all I wanted to say. My students would say, this is the first time you've ever finished early, but I'm going to go out on a high note.
All right. I think some of the councils might want to state something, but I do want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I do agree, one of the things I've seen to golf carts, and I was wondering, where are we legally standing with various, you know, precautions for that? I know that there are various areas that do have guidelines, and also private subdivision to have them, but that will be something that we as a city would gladly take a look at. And when it comes to the red light people running, I totally agree with you, totally agree. And I do know that there's some intersection where their lights are delayed, but I'm sure I'll see the manager, we'll follow through at that, and also check with state and see where we can go that as well.
Ms. Mayor, I only wish I had a solution to suggest, but teachers, we just deal in hypothetical and theoretical, and theoretical, we don't have any answers. So I'll leave it up to the people who know better to solve the problem, if it is agreed to be one.
Well, you know, you're excellent, and I'll tell you, it is agreed to be one, because I think it's been probably about two years back, when we had a representative from SDOT who reported to our flats committee, and he literally stated that he tells his family to treat the red lights like a start sign. So state is aware of it as well, but I promise you, you know, we'll continue to see what we can still do, because you can, we can always have some people regardless of what we do, they're going to do what they do, but we thank you.
Thank you, and it was nice to hear about your background. I wasn't as familiar with all your FMU connections. Makes me even prouder. Is that a question? Am I supposed to?
Yes, Chair recognizes.
So Joe, while we appreciate all the time that you did with Francis Marion and all your work there, what people do not, most of the people in this room do not know about is your early involvement with Florence Downtown and your work not only with the Downtown Development Corporation and the very, very beginnings of downtown redevelopment, where you were the very first one who purchased one of those buildings and helped renovate it and get that going. But in addition to that, as we are on the eve of the Pecan Festival, what everybody probably doesn't know, most everybody doesn't know, is at one point in time, Joe helped head up the Pecan Festival Committee. So we would not be where we are today in downtown as well as with the Pecan Festival if it wasn't for, and this was before you got married, by the way.
My three kids have dominated my civic duty time.
But, but personally, on my behalf, as well as the Pecan Festival Committee's behalf, and all those interested in our community's behalf, I want to thank you, before you leave town, I want to publicly thank you for your efforts and your volunteering to help make our community a better place. Thank you, Joe.
It's rumored that I was the inspiration for the nuts, let's go nuts. I think they were thinking about me when they came up with that tagline, although I didn't.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. And next, we have on our agenda is Ms. Steve, Ms. Brent, excuse me, Ms. Deborah Runyon to speak to the council regarding water issues. Thank you so much for being here.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Runyon. Happy to be here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. I have been introduced to a great book. It is the annual comprehensive financial report of Florence. And so it has lots of information about what goes on in our city. And I was told at one time, when I was talking about water issues, that that's a separate entity, and that is included in the financial budget as a business versus the government. So I thought that was interesting, and I do agree with what they mentioned to me. Water is an important, essential, absolute necessity to survive. Clean water is absolutely necessary to stay healthy. And we've had some water breaches, and I think people are looking at the water now more than ever, because we're paying more for water than we have ever paid before. We've had water breaches of yellow and brown water, we've had main line breaks, we've even had a wastewater treatment plant debacle, where it had to be completely renovated, from what I understand from Tropical Storm Debbie, and that was just last month in September. It was taken offline, there was no water for some residents and/or low pressure for those residents. So let's look at these residents for a minute. The city of Florence has approximately 40,000 residents. In that 40,000 residents, there are 16-plus thousand households or people who are paying for their water. They are paying water rates of increases of 4% since last October, when it was initiated. So let's look at the county. The county does, the county residents don't have any input to the water because they cannot vote in the city elections. So the county has 90,000 residents with 54,000 household units that are paying for water. Now, their water increase percentage is 6%, which is 2% more than the city residents. So you are making a lot of money in this business. This month, there's another increase. This increase, for this month, the city receives a 9% increase. So nine plus four is 13% since last year. The county pays 11%, which is six plus 11 equals 17% for our increased water rate on our water bill. Now, the county doesn't get any additional services. We don't get garbage pickup or anything like that. We do pay a dump fee at the, at the dump, and we can transport, of course, our own trash there, and we can also get private services that are $120 extra per month for those services. So it is, it can add up. One of the things I want to say is, in Florence, there are businesses that are drawing a lot of water out of our system. The battery plant, which will come online, will be 2 million gallons per day. Currently, Niagara Bottling Plant takes out 1 million gallons per day. And this is all in this book. The Thermo Fisher Pharmaceutical Solution Company, I don't know how much they take out, but they're like the fourth ones that take out water, because you have a list of the top 10 companies, five of them are manufacturing companies, so we have Niagara, Thermo Fisher, Reese or Ruiz, the food company, Johnson Controls, are taking water out of our system. So with this in mind, and the new rates are there, where is this money? I don't see it as a line item in the, in the budget. And there's a lot of information, and about a third of this book is dedicated to water, sewer, stormwater, treatment, all of those types of things. So the budget for Florence City is $48 million. The budget for the water is $43.9 million, and that's your water and sewer. Then you have another line item, which is Water and Sewer Construction Fund, which is another $12.3 million. So to add that up and to compare, $56 million for the water and that business, and we are your customers, and we want good, clean water with good pressure all the time. And the other one is the city for $48 million. So my question quickly is, where is the money? Where is this surplus money from? Where's it going? Where is it coming in? How much is it? And how is it going to be distributed? And I haven't heard a word about the CARE Act, by the way. Y'all are talking about that roundup, haven't heard a word about that.
Ms. Runyon, thank you so much. Your time is now concluded. Is that your last question or comment before?
Just where's the money?
Thank you so much.
Questions? I hope you've all read this, a lot of it, it takes a long time.
Ms. Runyon, thank you so much for coming and being here today. We really do appreciate it. And I don't for a second think that anybody in our community is unaware of the water concerns or is unaware of the cost of the one, the water bill. I think everybody's fully aware of it, so thank you for coming forward with it. The question you asked specifically about the budgeting and how all of that works?
Yes.
We, as a, as a city council, we covered that at our budget meeting that's held, and it, it's, let me just share with you, that's an extensive part, I mean, that's half of the day, that the staff goes over those things with us. day, that the staff goes over those things with us. So I don't think it would be appropriate or fair to try to give you a 10-second answer to what we received in an extensive period. But I would say, and our city manager, Scotty, if you would like to meet with Scotty, I'm sure he'll be more than happy, Scotty, am I right?
Correct.
To go over all of that with you in detail, to answer any specific questions you may have, so that he can show you exactly where the money is coming in from and where it's going out to, so that you will have a very good understanding of that. So I hope that helps to address your question in a way that's respectful of it.
Could it be a line item in the budget? Could it be a line item that is printed in the budget?
It's there, but I can't point you to it. I would ask Scotty to show you that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes.
Again, I want to say, as Councilman Javale said, thank you for coming. The best thing is if all the citizens would read our budget and be informed, you know, that would be the best-case scenario. One thing, a couple of things that I want to mention is first and foremost, all of our financials are audited every single year by a third-party auditor. So there's, in terms of any kind of misgiving or anything like that, we have to have audited financials. They have to be turned in. They have to be checked and verified and all those things. The next thing is, most of the members on council, with the exclusion of only a couple, have only been on council for about five or six years or less. And even the members who have been longer inherited a lot of the problems that we're dealing with today. I think one of the biggest reasons that you're seeing more issues today with the water is because when you go, and I'm no expert on water, but I'll give you the dummy-down version and the quick version, when you go to fix this system, it stirs it up. So anytime that we get a notification that we're going to do a repair in a certain area, I know that I'm going to get waterboarded on Facebook. I know I'm going to get messages, text messages, all these things because it's going to stir it up. It's just like your heart, you know, and having buildup around the walls of your heart, you know, one of the issues is when they start to do work, that something is going to happen and you could have a stroke. Well, same thing. All this stuff, sediment gets put out. The other thing is, we, with that increase, we approved a $650 million bond referendum to address the newly needed water and to do some repairs on our current water. Until that work is done, there shouldn't be any expectation that the issue would be fixed. We've got to do the work, you know? So we had to do a bond. We had to get the increase, and we had to do the work. So basically, I would say everyone on council is working on a problem that we inherited. And the reason that you're having issues now is because we're doing something about it. The reason that the rates are going up is because we're doing something about it. The reason that you're having issues with your water is because we're doing something about it. So we could have just, you know, left it as it was, you know, but we chose not to. And we chose not to in the face of much ridicule and criticism. But it's worth it because at the end of the day, I got a two-month-old grandson that I'm very proud of because I had all girls, you know? He drinks that water every day, you know? And so the water that you drink is the same water that my four daughters drank, the same water that my grandson drinks. And so I'm willing to take the ridicule and the criticism to fix the issues with our water, and it's going to take money to fix those issues. It's going to take money to expand our system, to bring in businesses that are going to pay people a living wage of 80-plus thousand dollars a year. So we're here to do tough things, and I appreciate educated and informed citizens giving us the opportunity to, one, be informed and know, you know, what's in our budget, but, two, to come up and challenge and hold us accountable and give me the opportunity to say, Ms. Runyon, you're right. There's some issues with our water. Some of it has been personal failure on our leadership. Some of it has been fixing four systems that were brought together under one, and some of it is because the work that we're raising the money for simply hasn't been done yet.
And if you could keep us informed of that periodically, updating along the way, then we will know what's going on. That would be very, very helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, every couple of months.
Just to add to what he just said, you also need to understand that even though we have bonded this money to fix this problem, it's going to take four years. So if all the money is dropped on us to fix all of the problems, it will still be four years. So please give us the grace of four years or more to fix this problem. It will not be an overnight thing, but we thank you for your concern.
So 2028, what can we expect in 2028?
That it will be better.
Progress. You can expect some progress.
Any other questions? Ms. Runyon, thank you for taking the time to come before us today, and thank you for reviewing the budget. But also, I would encourage you to go online. The information refers to our budget. Things are online. So I would recommend that you, you know, go through that. And then when you do have questions, you're welcome at any time to reach out to our city staff and our city manager.
That online budget is so hard to turn a page down and highlight, so.
All right, but that's fine. But when you go through and you have any questions or concerns with it, please still call our city manager. He's here definitely to assist you. And then also Mr. Hemmway, who's over our utilities director. The resources for you, they're here for you. So please continue to utilize them as you've done, and we appreciate you being able to monitor and keep track. And that's great on the part of all citizens. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we are proceeding with our agenda, and next we have on our agenda is Ellen McBride from PD Coalition to speak to the council regarding services provided by the PD Coalition. Mr. McBride?
Thank you very much. As previously mentioned, I'm Alan McBride. I am the program director for PD Coalition Alternatives to Violence Program. Of course, we are under the umbrella of PD Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Assault. We are a nonprofit volunteer organization, and we're dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence, child abuse, and to the needs of all victims. Each October annually is considered Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And today, I would like to provide you with some facts about domestic violence and some of the free services that our coalition provides to support victims and hold offenders responsible for their actions. But before that, I'd like to give you some national statistics. A woman is assaulted and beaten every nine seconds. One in three women and one in four men have been in abusive relationships. And one in five women and one in seven men have faced severe physical violence. Twenty people are abused by an intimate partner every minute, adding up to 10 million each year. More than 200,000 phone calls are placed to domestic violence hotlines. We have one every year. And get this statistic. The presence of guns in a home where domestic violence is a problem increases the risk of murder by 500%. Our strategy with PD Coalition is to eradicate and to do our very best to de-escalate the number of murders that's occurring in the PD area. We have a 24-hour crisis line to help victims of domestic and sexual assault. We have an emergency shelter where they can house up to 30 days. We have a transitional shelter where they can stay for a year. We offer trauma counseling. We offer hospital advocacy as well as services for children that have been sexually or physically abused and who have witnessed domestic violence in their homes. And lastly, we provide offender programs and provide evidence-based services for offenders to help them take responsibility for their abusive behavior. So within that, we have what we call the 26 Weeks Offender Intervention Program. That's a 26 weeks program where folks are referred to us by the courts, high and lower courts, and that are sent to us by Department of Social Services, whom they have discovered family agitation and domestic violence in homes. We have a Caring Dads Program. And incidentally, that first program that I spoke about, it's a self-pay program. Offenders are required to pay for that, except for the fact that we do get some assistance from those who are under probation supervision. And the Department of Social Services will pay some of those fees who might qualify. Secondly, we have a Caring Dads Program, okay? And this is a 17 weeks national program, evidence-based, free of charge. And the focus is on fathers being accountable for abuse and countering their attitudes linked to abusive and neglect behaviors and promoting healthy relationships between fathers and their children, whose relationships have been disenfranchised as a result of violence occurring in their homes. And lastly, we have a Couples Counseling, which is a free six-weeks services program and rendered by therapists, licensed therapists. And if need be, if the situation requires that they should go further, that's provided as well. So the point in fact is, any violence is too much. And that's what we try to do to eradicate as much as we possibly can. I'd like for Ms. Hamilton to come and do a presentation. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Madam Mayor, Council, it is so good to see you all. So a very long time ago, Mayor Rocky Pierce allocated $10,000 to the coalition to establish the first emergency safe shelter in this region. So we had a campaign called A Place to Lay Their Head, $150,000 campaign for both our transitional shelter of near Wallace and the emergency shelter here. So the other night, we celebrated 35 years and a successful campaign. We raised about $161,000. So we wanted to present to the city a recognition for you all's support of our efforts for all of these years, and we just appreciate it. I think that's our family. He certainly knows. The chief was the sergeant, I believe, when we first started, I believe. We won't mention that. So this says Emergency Safe Shelter 35th Anniversary, Florence. All the old folks.
All the old folks. trees. You got to take a picture. You got to take a picture.
And to Mr. McBride and to Ellen, before y'all leave, thank you so much for all that y'all do. And to Ellen, to you, I give a special hats off. I remember with PD Coalition when I was a student nurse at Francis Marion Unit or Fair City, I did part of my internship there. And also, when you did the Durant Children Home, one of my classmates, Kathy Saunders, became a nurse practitioner. She had to go through there to be with the children. So you have a lasting legacy here. And the most important thing is because of your legacy, someone else now has a better life because you've given them the skills to be able to leave from a circumstances that was not good for them. So my hats are off to all of you and all the volunteers. Thank you so much for all that you do. And Ellen, thank you for staying persistent to keep this issue before everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you. That completes our appearances before council. Next, we'll move forward to our introductions of ordinance. First, we will have Bill Number 2024 dash 16 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to abandon the unopened right-of-way between 913 and 1003 Chestnut Street identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 90063, that's Euro 1, that's Euro 11, and 09963, that's Euro 1, that's Euro 10. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We can hear from Mr. Duttlet this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This property is located on Chestnut Street, or this right-of-way, rather. It's just south of Palmetto Street. And by all practical purposes, this unopened right-of-way has been incorporated into the two, I guess, adjacent properties, lots for years. It shows up on G I S as being incorporated into their lots. And only when a property was being transferred did an attorney contact us and tell us that they didn't think this had ever been cleaned up. So went back searching through the records, and sure enough, I found no reference to the right-of-way ever being abandoned. So in an effort to clean it up, we did take it to planning commission, do all the appropriate public notices. Planning commission did vote six to zero to unanimously abandon the property. As you can see here, here's an old subdivision plan from 1943 that shows the unopened right-of-way. And a plat has been prepared. Once this is, you know, if it's chosen to be abandoned, it would be incorporated into the two adjacent lots. So each of the two adjacent lots would get an equal portion of it. And I know that plat's very complicated. This is not exactly the scale, but the green portion represents the right-of-way, and once it's abandoned, it will go to each the red lot and the yellow lot adjacent to it. So if this is abandoned, it will give them the ability through the quick claim D process to absorb these portions of right-of-way. And this concludes staff's report.
Any questions? Chair recognizes.
So when these properties were purchased at the time, they were not included, those right-of-way was not included?
It was not. It was never developed as part of the subdivision, never actually constructed. So when they were transferred through the years, it did not include these portions. So, but they've been treating it as their own for years, the various property owners.
Right. And that's why I was going to ask you next, who was maintaining the property? They were.
They were.
And they understand that they will inherit this property?
That's correct.
Good. That's all I need.
You know, the questions are discussion. Thank you, Mr. Duttlet, for that. You have a motion in this second. What is your position? Hold us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And a opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2024 dash 17 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to resolve four parcels from PD to AC identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 90103 dash Euro 1 dash 002, and 090103 dash Euro 1 dash 003, and 90103 dash Euro 1 dash 004, and 90103 dash Euro 1 dash 005. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We are here for Mr. Duttlet this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This does comprise four lots that total approximately .1 acres. It is located between Church and Berenger Street, essentially very close to where the streets divide when going south on Church Street. Here's a close-up view of the parcels. The one parcel that you see at the top there to the north is owned by D O T, so it's not included as part of this. It is currently zoned planned development. It is an old planned development that dates back. It's either part of when the Housing Authority or Ebenezer Church, it's part of that planned development. It's really unknown because It's really unknown, because no records were found on this old plan development. They're very slim to none as to what the guidelines are. To make the property developable, the owner did petition us to rezonate the property. The original petition was for NC Six Point Three, which is a housing, neighborhood conservation that allows housing in the form of single-family, townhomes and multifamily. It did, when we go to the zoning map, it is zoned Activity Center all along this corridor. So along the way, the, the request, through, through the Planning Commission process and through staff reviewing it, the request did change to Activity Center, which is a light commercial zoning, which also, or a mixed-use zoning, which allows home construction in the form of townhomes and live-work units, as well as some light commercial uses. So, it did go before Planning Commission for public hearing. Ultimately, the recommendation to zone Activity Center was voted on unanimously, or recommended unanimously by the Planning Commission. And I do have, it is a vacant lot, as you can see in the photographs here. And this does conclude staff's report.
Do we have? Chair recognizes.
So, we received some information last week about the zoning, and the Activity Center zoning designation would allow for a much broader group of activities as opposed to the NC Six Point Three designation. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would allow for some light commercial as well.
Light, for instance?
Like a retail space, personal services, even office use.
And just so we're all on the same page on this, what's coming before us is a request for a zoning designation, and once that zoning designation changes, happens, we don't have the ability, if the developer, the owner says, you know what, we decide, we don't want to do one thing, we want to change it and do something else, that's allowed within that zoning. Council does not have the opportunity to go back and revisit that. Once a zoning change is made, it's made. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would then be regulated through the Unified Development Ordinance.
So, while they are presenting to us a housing proposal, if we were to change it to the Activity Center designation, it would not be limited to a housing proposal, to, to a housing designation? Is that right?
That's correct. It would open it up to some commercial uses.
But, the NC Six Point Three would limit it to housing? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chair recognizes. Thank you.
In, on this parcel of land, it is right, this triangle shape, it's right off of Church and Behringer.
That's correct.
And so you come off of Palmetto Street, and right in the middle, they want to put eight townhomes.
Well, we've seen a preliminary plan, which is actually twelve townhomes, but-
Twelve townhomes.
Twelve townhomes. But we don't know the full extent of that, because they haven't fully fleshed out stormwater, parking, and everything. It'll, that'll dictate the amount they can actually get on there.
And so my concern is, that traffic is horrific, right there at the light, at Palmetto and Church. And so with that, them emptying out into the streets, you know, coming, leaving and coming from homes, they would, it would be hard for them to get in and out. Was there a traffic study, or we just don't get involved with that?
That would be, those are DOT streets, so DOT would force a traffic study if required.
But we would have already zoned it?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair recognizes councilwoman Smith.
Count of a question off of councilwoman Barnes's question. In that preliminary plan, did they give an entrance-on-exit way onto, into that property?
They, there are currently already two curb cuts on that property along the Behringer Street side, on the western portion.
Can you bring that up? Chair recognizes. I'm not done yet. So the entrance-and-exit plan that they show is going to be off of Pine Street? Am I saying that correctly? Off of Behringer?
He said Behringer.
The Behringer Street side. That's where the current curb cuts are. Obviously, they could petition for something different with DOT.
And from your knowledge, were you, there was a residential home there at one point?
I, I believe there was. I'm, I'm not sure, though.
Okay. My last question, when they came before planning, did they give any indication of the townhomes as being home-ownersed or rent?
They did not.
Okay.
Does that complete for the council? Chair recognizes councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
Is it possible that they can come back and give us the details, like the sewer and stuff, and then we decide? Because we don't know if it's going to be eight, twelve, nine, five, or what, until they do all of the wastewater and-
It's a function of Planning Commission to review sketch plans. Staff and Planning Commission review once a property is zoned. So, you know, a, a full development plan is not typically part of a rezoning request.
Chair recognizes councilwoman Call.
Has the impact on the existing water system been examined at all? Would there need to be any extension of any new lines?
There, there would not. Water and sewers available to the property.
Chair recognizes councilwoman.
I see that. We can approve here to change the ordinance modification. I want to make a motion to change that ordinance modification to NC Six Point Three, to their original request.
So you're amending the original motion? You offer an amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
We have an offer of an amendment to the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So it has a problem, the motion is second. All who's in favor? Okay. All right, then. We are discussed. Chair recognizes.
So, if we go along with the change to the ordinance to go to NC Six Point Three, if I heard you correctly, when they first came before the developer, when they first came to staff, that was what their request was, the NC Six Point Three?
That's correct, and based on our discussions with them, that would be agreeable to them.
So, it's consistent with what they had initially asked for?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have an amendment on the floor now to amend the original motion to read for N Six Point Three in a discussion. Hearing none, all who's in favor of amending the motion, please signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. Let note that we have amended the motion that will now read the ordinance to rezonate parcels from, well, parcels from PD to N Six Point Three, and that's identified. That is our new motion that we will be voting on. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Okay. So now we have that in a discussion. All who's in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading, but amendment to be N Six Point Three. Next, we have Bill Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Dash Eighteen for a first reading. It's the ordinance to annex and zone CG Five Five One and Five Nine Seven West Lucas Street, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number Nine Zero Zero Seven Zero Dash Euro One Dash Zero Two Five, and Nine Zero Zero Seven Zero Dash Euro One Dash Zero Two Eight. Do we have a motion?
Some move. Second.
So you have a motion in the second. At this time, we're here from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the property located along Luca, Luca Street, which is the current location of the Seminar Brewing Company. They are contiguous with city limits. The proposed zoning is commercial general, which is the same zoning as the adjacent lot in this location. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously seven to zero to recommend this zoning, and this concludes staff's report.
You've heard the report. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. We have two. Chair recognizes councilwoman Neesmith Jackson, and after councilwoman Neesmith Jackson, we'll move forward to recognizing with councilwoman Call. Councilwoman Jackson?
So you say this is the actual Seminar Brewing building?
It is, yes.
Okay. And so they just want to annex it into the city?
That's correct.
Okay. Chair recognizes councilwoman Call.
Just for the record, is there any additional lines?
Water and sewer, water and sewer is currently available to the site. And they're, and they're already using city water and sewer.
Any other questions? Our discussion. Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Dash Nineteen for a first reading. It's an ordinance to amend Article One of Chapter Eight of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance, and add a provision relating to the open burning and amended Articles Ones of Chapter Ten of the State City Code to add provision relating to nuisance smoke and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion in the second. At this time, we're here from Chief Tanner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This ordinance is actually just introducing some language to specify exactly what open burning is and what nuisance smoke is. And this will allow us the opportunity to enforce a no-burn in areas that doesn't comply with this ordinance.
Do we have any question from council? Hearing none. Thank you for that, chief. All who's in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that bill has passed first reading. Next, we will move into our introductions of resolution. First, we have Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Dash Thirty-Six. It's a resolution certifying a building as abandoned building site pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Building Revitalization Act Title Twelve, Chapter Sixty-Seven, Section Twelve Dash Sixty-Seven Dash One Hundred of the South Carolina Code of Law as amended regarding the properties located at One Twenty Seven West Evans Street, Florence, South Carolina, Florence County Tax Map Number Nine Zero One Six Seven Dash Zero Two Dash Zero Zero Eight. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second. Do we have any questions for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, dislike sign. Let it reflect that bill number, or Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Dash Thirty-Six has passed. Next, we have a Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Dash Thirty-Seven. It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA, Stormwater Infrastructure Program Subsequent Agreement between the City of Florence, the South Carolina Office of Residencies, to fund a stormwater infrastructure improvement project that will mitigate the impact of the future disasters. Do we have a motion in the second?
Second.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. Next, we have Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Thirty-Eight. A resolution to direct the city manager of the City of Florence to investigate allegations of neglect of duty on the part of the Board of Commission of the Housing Authority of the City of Florence, and a resolution report his finding and results regarding it to the city council. This can be discussed in executive session. Do we want to vote now? Do we want to have executive session?
Executive session, that's right.
Okay, it will. All right. So we have a motion for executive session. So we're discussing executive session. At this time, there is no report to council. At this time, we will have the mayor's report, and at this time, I'm going to call for Mr. Davis to give us an update on some of the things that the city has been doing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we all know, and you talked about earlier, there's a horrific storm just a couple weeks ago, Hurricane Helene in Milton. The City of Florence and its staff members will certainly understand the devastation that has occurred, particularly to our friends in South Carolina and North Carolina. We have a number of staff members that were affected, with family members that have been displaced and lost their lives and lost housing. And we've talked a lot about what we would do as a community. We think it's important that the city respond. Our employees expect us to respond and to help, as we've always done there. We've reached out to Spruce Pine, North Carolina, small community in North Carolina that has a population of about 2,200 people. We've spoken with their city manager, Ms. Darlene Butler, the town manager there, and the City of Florence will be working as a sister city with that community to try to help them as they struggle to bring their city back there. We'll be working with, again, our employees to provide goods there. We'll also provide some funding to them from our employees. It's important to note that we have a number of employees, particularly our directors, they've led the charge. Some have gone to parts of North Carolina, visiting there on their own, taking their own dollars to assist those. I'm not surprised at all, because that's the type of employees that we have in this community. One in particular I like to talk about is Hannah Davis. Hannah has cadaver dogs, and she's been asked to bring those animals to North Carolina, unfortunately to look for bodies there. But she'll be, she's on standby now to provide that service if necessary. She's agreed. And again, we have a number in the police department. Ashley Shelley has, he and his family has taken a lot of goods there. We have our assistant manager, Clint Moore, who's taken time off to go up to North Carolina to help and support, and will continue that. Certainly, we'll be getting additional information out to the public as we make plans, again, to help Spruce Pines, North Carolina, located in Mitchell County, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. And also, under the mayor's report, I do want to actually acknowledge that this past Saturday, that PD Pride actually presented the first PD Equality Day here in the City of Florence at our city market. It was a great event. It was an honor to be there, to speak and to citizens upon representation, because it matters, and also because equality mattered. So I would like to thank them for hosting that first event here in Florence, and I hope that there will be many more. And also, I'm going to send this folder, folder to Casey. This will be some information that she can share out to council in reference to communications that I receive, in reference to the Housing Authorities. If I may pass this to Casey, please file records, and Casey can gladly share that if she need to. Casey, I can always forward you the original emails as well. So that concludes our report. There was various events that did occur that I found to be very important this past weekend, also some foundations. We had galas that recognized supporting community development and activities within our community as well. I do want to acknowledge, and you can go to the City of Florence website, you will see that there will be another lights on at the school that will be held and held here in the City of Florence, but this year it will be held out at the soccer complex. But also, there will be also other community events that will occur for the young people and the families, in hopes to decrease the number of children who will be out on the night of Halloween. So I encourage you to look out for these events, and please support the various organizations that will be having these events. And next, we will proceed to our committee reports. First, we have a report from the chair on the Business Development Committee.
Thank you. The Business Development Committee met on September nineteen. Councilwoman Barnes was there with myself, and Scotty Davis, Clint Moore, and Michael Hemingway, and we discussed a number of different matters, but, and I'm sorry that Ms. Runyon isn't here, because Michael gave us a very-
She's here.
Where is she? Oh, there you are. Good. I'm so glad you're here, because I want to just briefly review for you some of the things, because you asked, where is the money going? Well, I'm just going to give you a quick rundown of some of the projects that were discussed. Don't ask me a whole lot of details about each one. I'll give you the thumbnail sketch, but we can get Mr. Hemingway to give you, drill down on some of the details if you want. But Mr. Hemingway gave us a wonderful update from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority Program that we had gotten, and so what we were working on for our water and sewer systems. First thing, the distribution system. There was a twelve-inch water line along South Carolina Road that was underway, as long as, as long, additionally, an eight-inch water line along Metter's Road, a twelve-inch water line along Whitehall Shores Road, a six-inch water line along Darlington Street, a three-inch water line along Hollyberry Lane. Additionally, groundwater production treatment plant maintenance was, we got an update on that. The GE Water Treatment Plant, there was initial investigation of the well system. That's been completed- That's been completed, and the engineering team is presently designing rehabilitation work in preparation to bid the winter twenty twenty-four. And so, just so we remember, our water system has two sources. One is, uh, ground wells. There are thirty-three, is that right? Thirty-three wells that we reach into the aquifer and pull groundwater out, and that's about forty-five percent of our total water that we get. The remaining fifty-five percent comes from the surface water that we pull out of the PD River. So you have two sources. This first one, the GE Water Treatment Plant, dealt with the, a groundwater, uh, rehabilitation that's being done in one of those wells, and the treatment plants for those wells. Uh, additionally, the River Road Water Treatment Plant, that was, uh, work is being done on that, 'cause there's, the water that's pulled out of the groundwater has to get treated as well before it enters the system. So you have fourteen, uh-
Fourteen ground.
Fourteen groundwater treatment plants treating the water, uh, pulled out by those thirty-three wells. And that enters the system in addition to the surface water treatment plant, which is out there pulling water out of the PD River. So you have, when we talk about water treatment facilities, we gotta be clear, are we talking about surface water or groundwater? And so, work is being done on, what we just talked about is on the groundwater side. But in addition to that, as, uh, Councilwoman Barnes mentioned, we're also approved the bond, and, and Councilman Braddock mentioned, there's that bond that is going to allocate money to increase capacity at the surface water plant. And that is, uh, we got an update on that. That project is out to bid with an opening bid of, uh, that's already happening?
October thirty-first.
October thirty-first. So that, we'll be getting bids on that coming up, and that is the four-year project that we're talking about. It's extensive, because it's going to double our capacity from ten million gallons a day production out of the surface water plant to twenty million gallons a day out of that plant. And Michael, if I ever, if I say something out of line, you tell me and correct me, please. Uh, so anyway, we got an update on that. Then the other thing that's included in the, uh, bond is the, the sewer. So that's the wastewater. So you have the surface water treatment that needs to get done, but then you also have the wastewater treatment that needs to get done. And so, we got an update on the Jeffries Creek Interceptor. And that's a line that's gonna run essentially down the middle of Second Loop Road, from Cashua to Erby Street. And that, the funding for that is in the, uh, bond that was just produced as well, just approved as well. So it's not only, the bond that we passed not only is gonna be, uh, assisting in addressing the, the water treat, the water side of it, but it's also addressing the sewer side of it as well. And we've been under a, an order from, initially DHEC, for, I don't know, five years at least, that says we needed to do this because of the problems of the water, the wastewater running, that line running through Jeffries Creek. And we get, um, problems into the creek, and so we have to make sure that we address that. So this interceptor line that's coming in, it's about fifty million, is that right? Forty-five million dollars to run from the, this interceptor from Cashua down to Erby Street. So we got an update on that as well. And so, um, that is currently under review. And then, of course, the extension of the water line out to AESC, we got an update on that. And that's pretty, very extensive, and it's ongoing. So that, along with a, um, brief overview of some of the projects that are going on, that was, uh, essentially what was done in our committee meeting. Is there anything further from other council members? No.
Thank you for that report. Now we hear from the Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my committee, we did not meet, but I did want to report, we did have, um, we do have some good news. Our CDC has now had their first home up for sale. And I think they may have, already have a buyer. So that is great. It is up and running and doing well. Um, and we're on our way. And so wanted to just give that report. Uh, that's it for my committee.
Thank you for that report. Next, we have a report from the Chair of the Marketing and Public Relation Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I want to start off by saying, uh, please continue to put Si in your phones. We need to add him to your phones. That's where you get the real-time information. Um, again, we have sixty-three percent of engagement, um, is via text with Si. Thirty, thirty-six percent is via web chat. So we are looking at increasing our numbers to make sure that we get, um, information to you in real time. So please make sure you program Cypress in your phone. Um, we're gonna start promoting it everywhere. We don't have the entire city, um, enrolled in Cypress yet or downloaded on, on the phone, so please make sure you do that. Um, also, we're, uh, hosting a media day at the Frank Willis PD Regional Water Treatment Plant, um, as well as an industry day, and that will be coming up soon. Um, we'll be announcing those dates really, really soon, so they haven't come out yet. Um, also, we're having a Doing Business with Local Government Minority Business Seminar, which will be held November the sixth, nine AM, right here. So if you have, um, and this event is, of course, to increase minority participation in local government procurement process. So we always want to encourage and increase that. So please, if you know any minority businesses, make sure that they are here November the sixth. And we're asking people to RSVP by October thirtieth, so that is the end of the month. So please make sure that you, uh, RSVP to that. Um, let's see. Also, I want to mention that, uh, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, and we're gonna focus on increasing awareness on breast cancer, promoting screening and early detection, and also raising funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. So please, uh, that's what, you'll see the pink ribbons this month is for the breast cancer awareness. Um, as Mr., uh, McBride talked about it, it's also Domestic Violence, um, Awareness Month. Uh, we come a long way, and we still have a longer way to go. Um, listening to those statistics were really, really scary, uh, when it comes to domestic violence. So, uh, please, keep this awareness, and let's kinda, um, harp on our state-elected officials to kinda toughen laws to protect our women. Um, also, October is Emotional Wellness Month, so it's a good time to remind yourself to prioritize self-care, because life throws many, many challenges and painful struggles our way. And of course, it's Halloween. Lots of churches and community events are planning things, so please be safe and don't eat all the candy. Give me some. All right, that concludes my report. Y'all have a good day.
And also, um, Councilwoman Jackson, I do want to also, um, acknowledge that we had had a conversation with a teacher from West Orange House School.
Yes.
About, you, everyone knows we have the City University, but we're working to expand that to have it be, yes, a City Youth University.
Yeah.
No, that's fine. Um, so, but I'm sure that we are setting up a meeting with the head of these social cu, um, social studies for the whole of District One. So I'm sure the Councilwoman will be to give her report on that, um, next Monday in her report.
Yes.
And also, when it comes to emotional awareness, on November the sixteenth, at Barnes Street, from ten forty-five to three o'clock PM, there will be a meeting, our, the young people of Florence will be having, um, a mental health awareness day. But there'll be more information that will come out, and I'm sure the Councilwoman will be able to share that with you as well. So Councilwoman, thank you for that report, and everyone, remember to ask Si.
Ask Si.
So next, we have our report from the Chair from the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Finance and Budget Committee, we met on September twenty-fifth, uh, four o'clock. It's me, myself, myself, excuse me, Councilman Braddock and Councilman J. Lawrence Smith, the second. Um, at that meeting, we discussed the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five Budget Carry, Carry Forward Ordinance. Uh, this will be presented to us in November. Uh, but basically, it's, um, it's the project that was budgeted for last fiscal year. Um, will be, of course, carried over to this, carried forward into this new budget, uh, that will be, again, brought forward to us on November twenty-fourth. Um, the majority of the meeting that we did have was on, uh, on the twenty-fifth, was a presentation by Mr. Tim Norwood. Uh, he is now the new chairman of the Accommodation Tax Committee. Um, and they have already set aside their, uh, requests, or, excuse me, uh, their recommendations for the accommodation tax funds. Um, in a sense, in simplest terms, the accommodation tax, um, is basically, uh, you know, money generated from hotels. There's money put aside, uh, for cities to give to organizations that, um, help promote, uh, to help tourism, promote tourism, excuse the word, help promote tourism here in the City of Florence. And, uh, there was a lot of organizations that applied. Of course, as in every situation, there is less money than request. Um, however, uh, we are comfortable with the recommendations from the, uh, Tax Accommodation Board. And again, that'll come, come forward to us, uh, in November. Uh, lastly, we had, well, sorry, next, we had an update of the opioid funds money, uh, that was received by the organizations that were approved by this council over the last year. Um, and I think, and I want to commend Glenn, uh, and, uh, city staff for the parameters that they put in place to make sure that, you know, these organizations are doing the right thing with the money. Um, and again, I'm pleased to report, I think, at this point, there's no red flags or anything from any organizations that have received money. Um, and again, I just want to commend them for putting those parameters in place. I think we're probably one of the only cities, uh, that do have parameters in place once we, they receive the money, um, to make sure that they're using it for the appropriate reasons. And then lastly, we reviewed the, uh, financial package for August twenty twenty-four. And again, uh, there's no red flags or anything, uh, in that financial report. And if I didn't miss anything, I will, that will conclude, I'll just conclude my report.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that report. That concludes the report at this time. We have our executive session in reference for a personal matter regarding the Housing Authority, thirty dash four dash seventy eight dash one. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. We're on for the staff with executive session at this time. We have a return from executive session, at which time no votes are actually were taken. The item that was discussed in executive session was Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight. It was a resolution to direct the city manager of the City of Florence to investigate allegation of neglect of duty on the part of the Board of Commission of the Housing Authority of the City of Florence and report his finding in such regards to the city council. Do we have a position with our motion for the resolution? Hearing, hearing none, the resolution fair for the like of a motion, our second. So at this time, this concludes our agenda. At this time, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're outta here.